No public comment this evening. Can we please call the roll?
Ugrar?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Peschall?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Mayor Palmieri?
Here.
Period seven.
I got you.
All right. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll jump right ahead to new ordinance 20-103, ratification of declaration of emergency for the city of Oshkosh issued by the city manager March 12, 2020 in response to COVID-19 coronavirus. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that we waive the rules and adopt on first reading. Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, please take the roll. Ugrar?
Here. Yes.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Period seven. So we pass on waiving the rules and back to the ordinance 20-103.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, this is an ordinance, so now it will stay in place until what, the council, it comes back to change the ordinance back or reset the ordinance? Is that how that works?
Can I take this one?
I'll let the city attorney do that.
Sure.
The, if you look on the second page, the initial period for the emergency was originally declared through April 11, 2020 by the city manager. This ordinance is drafted to extend that period until it is terminated by the common council.
Okay.
So it will come back to you to terminate the period of emergency.
Okay. Just one other question. Is it an ordinance number we had in place that was a vacant ordinance number? Is that how we used it?
This is not going to go into the code book.
Okay.
It's...
Because it's a state emergency?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
This is similar to when, for example, you've canceled a meeting around Christmas time. That's also done by ordinance, but that's not put into the code.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roloff, would you like to just share any more detail on what this is for the public?
Well, Chief Stanley is going to be providing some general public information, but what this does, and we did it a week ago because we just wanted to be proactive, and this enables us, if we're faced with a situation where we need to act quickly in terms of purchasing, or directing, or making some orders, that we can, we can act without seeking any additional approval. So it's really just to give ourselves the flexibility to, to react appropriately and timely to emergencies.
What are the limits on that?
It's really anything to order public life. It's, it's pretty broad. We take that responsibility very seriously, though, and I think we've done that with other emergencies that we've had. And this one, it's slowly unfolding, so I can't even fathom right now what things we might do. We've done a couple purchases in the past week. Our, our mode right now is really just planning, so we haven't really had to exercise a lot of emergency powers, except things that the chief will talk about in a few moments.
So then, will you talk about, or will chief talk about this, does that extra purchasing also include, aside from equipment, additional personnel if needed, or?
If necessary, if necessary, we would do that, but we've already got plans in place to shift around existing city employees.
Ms. Lawrenson, I think, has a question.
The ordinance has, kind of the limitation is, it has to be reasonable and necessary in response to the emergency situation. And then there's a second part that says, in addition to those emergency powers, if council's unable to meet, the city manager can take actions with other items that are, like authorizing purchases, accepting bids, other things that are basically kind of within the budget, within approving the register of payments for the invoices and payroll. If, for some reason, the council wouldn't be able to, to meet, some of that routine stuff like paying the bills would also be able to be done, even though it's maybe not directly a bill related to the emergency. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby?
So my question is, if we cannot meet in person, and let's just say there are extraordinary expenses, how will that be communicated to council? And in what timeframe?
That's really more of a, how we would keep council updated. We are putting out a press release or information daily. We put daily updates out. To the degree they're more council-oriented, things that you would normally be responsible for taking action, but we're preemptively doing it, those are things that I'll be notifying you on a regular basis. But so far, we haven't gotten to that point yet because we're really just in the planning mode. I think chief can talk about a couple of things that we've with that purchasing.
Any further discussion on the ratification? All right, please take the roll. Ugrar?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Period seven. So next is city manager's announcements and statements, update from staff.
I'm going to turn this over to Chief Stanley. As you saw from the, our ordinance provides that the fire chief is the designated emergency manager when a emergency declaration is prepared, and Chief Stanley's been working feverishly to, to address a lot of the issues and appreciate his leadership on this. And I'll let Chief Stanley just give you an update, and then I'll just supplement that if council has any more information they want.
Honorable mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give you a quick briefing of where we're at. Clearly, these are frightening times, times of uncertainty with the worldwide pandemic of the COVID-19 coronavirus. That, as the city manager indicated, things are rapidly evolving, that minute to minute, you know, in some ways, they're moment to moment evolution, some ways, as city manager Roloff indicated, it is slowly unfolding as well. That, you know, as you've seen from the statements from Governor Evers, from the president, you know, from the federal government, you know, we anticipate this could last for weeks to months. You know, and what does that look like? That we are being very proactive as a city, you know, and as a community, to try to mitigate risk and to minimize impact. That, you know, there is concern globally about this is a Novell virus, that we don't know everything about it yet, but, you know, research is happening actively throughout the country. That we're looking at, how do we stop this spread locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally? You know, that there are some concerns about its contagiousness, or its contagion score, and about the potential for it having a higher mortality rate, particularly in vulnerable populations. And that's why you're seeing such an active stance across the country and the world. That, right now, we have topped 100 cases, confirmed cases in the state of Wisconsin, but fortunately for us, we have been at a pretty steady number in rate of infection in Winnebago County. And our confirmed cases from the past week to present, to this moment, I can still count on one hand. You know, so we are not seeing that exponential rate of infection that some of the other communities around the country, or even Wisconsin, have seen.
Chief, how many of those are in Oshkosh?
I will not disclose that information. That is confidential from the health department. So that, the health department is not releasing that information because of patient privacy. So.
I'm not asking for names. I'm asking how many people here, that people live here in Oshkosh?
Yeah, correct. The health department has directed us to not release that information.
That's kind of asinine, isn't it?
I'm sorry, I don't work for the health department, sir. So those, of those cases within Winnebago County, those, the vast majority of them, almost 100%, are being treated at home. You are being, have not been hospitalized. That's on, as you're well aware, March 12, at 1,700 hours, we declared an emergency. Subsequently, we opened up our emergency operations center at 8:00 in the morning, March 14. One of the first things that we did was to put a joint information center in place. So our media services staff, public information officers from police and fire, other marketing and PR-type staff within the city are working on messaging both to our internal and external customer. You know, that we realize we need to keep as accurate and current information as possible out into the, the community. And that includes our internal community. And so we are, have been messaging daily, if not hourly, internally, and we are keeping up to the moment externally. We are pushing people to the city website. If you visit the city website, you'll see big red banner on the top, you know, that gives us, gives all the most recent information regarding city updates and bulletins. We also have put in place a research branch where we have a designated, delegated researcher from the library that is embedded in the EOC that is monitoring, in tandem with our joint information center, social media, mainstream media for trends, for concerns. Also, they are verifying and monitoring county, state, and federal resources, such as the CDC and World Health Organization. That, you know, there were some question about how are we making decisions, how, you know, what does the declaration mean? And, you know, what are we going to do with that? You know, that we have got a prioritized decision-making process. You know, and really, the first priority that we have as we address this issue is the safety of our community. You know, how do we keep our community safe? How do we keep them healthy? And how do we particularly protect those vulnerable populations? That's the secondary, or the, the next phase of decision-making is how do we keep our employee group safe? You know, and you've seen some of that in the closing of city facilities, and, you know, the library, the museum, things like that as well. Yeah, then, our third priority is continuity of operations, you know, continuing city services. That's fortunately, you know, from my estimation and observation, that we really have a smooth operating city. We operate very efficiently and effectively year-round. You know, I think we're judicious with our decisions and our, the way we spend money. That is not being discarded. You know, we're just doing it at a faster pace. But, you know, that we have enjoyed the support of council, you know, that we enjoy a very strong infrastructure and a very resilient community. You know, and that has helped us to fare well. You know, and I'm not saying this is to be braggadocious or empty platitudes of, we're in a good spot. You know, and the feedback that we are getting from colleagues, from other agencies, from staff, from the community is, we're ahead of the curve. That the city manager and I, and my colleague in public safety, Dean Smith, feel very comfortable with where we're at. You know, and I know, if I were to put myself in your shoes as a city council member, you know, and as an elected official, as a community leader, you'd be worried about, are we doing all the things we need to do? You know, and I want to assure you that we are. That we are following the recommendations of the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, public health. We are in constant conversation with the fire department's medical director, and we are in constant conversation with our healthcare partners within our community about what is going on, what are we doing to plan and prepare and protect our community and our employees. That's, some questions have come up about, what are we doing? What are we planning? What are we working on? We are always looking at continuity of operations. How do we keep city services going? You know, that we are not at a threat of any discontinuation of utilities, public service, public safety, that we, we have not been impacted by, by this at that level yet. You know, and hopefully, we will not. That we are not seeing an increase in, in usage of public safety resources. Our incidents are either staying the same or decreasing a little bit. That we are not worried about not being able to, to run the buses, gather the trash, things like that yet. But we are also planning, you know, we hope for the best, we plan for the worst. So we are putting contingency plans in place of, what will we do if this does continue to spread? We have absenteeism because people are sick, or caring for sick family members, you know, but how will we continue operations? So we are, have those plans in place. You know, a lot of them were in place before. You know, that a global and national pandemic is not a new threat. You know, so a lot of the preparation has been done for many years. You know, plans are in place. You just have to take them down and follow them when you get to that level. We're working with the finance director, Mr. Van Gomple, to make sure that we are tracking things. We have put measures in place to track expenditures, so that if the options for federal or state reimbursement come into play, that we have all of our paperwork, all of our accounting in order. Also, you know, another contingency planning that we have, we're working around of, how do we support the election? You may have seen the signage and, you know, the flow pattern, and you came through the lobby today, so that we can continue the early voting. We are also actively working on contingency plans to, how do we make sure that we support that election process as we get to, to the active voting as well? You know, so very comfortable there.
And getting, excuse me, I'm sorry, and getting the message out to encourage the absentee process, right?
Correct. Yeah, that we are frequently putting that message out about absentee voting. That is an option, as you come through the door downstairs now, of, let's get you signed up for absentee voting. But we are very much taking the recommendation about social distancing and putting that in place. You know, so we are encouraging the community-wide, you know, that you shelter in place, you limit your social interactions. You know, and that's how, as a society, we're going to potentially get ahead of this virus. So any opportunity we have to limit social interactions, you know, you can see the social distancing that's occurring here in this room, you know, that, that we are aggressively pushing out measures and plans to make that occur. So we have scalable plans for if we do have to reduce the transit service. Busing is fully operational at this time, and we are not envisioning any reduction for the immediate future. And then, the biggest concern is healthcare. I know there was a report out of Green Bay about the capacity of the hospitals in the community of Green Bay and that surrounding area. We have spoke with our local hospitals today about contingency planning, what are they doing, what is their availability. We'll speak with them again on Friday to continue having discussions about contingency planning, but we do not share those concerns that other communities are facing. We are, capacity-wise, still in good shape. Much of that is because of the messaging of, use telemedicine, don't, you know, come to the emergency room if you don't need to, things like that. Our community is, is being very responsive to that.
Chief, along those lines, there was that community to the north that put in the no transport on the ambulances if it was COVID-19 symptoms, but not critical. We don't have that same concern?
We do not at this time because of our, our limited numbers within the county. You know, our needs right now, you know, we don't really require any legislative action other than what you've already done by ratifying the declaration. You know, as I mentioned, this is rapidly evolving, so the needs may, may come. But at this time, you know, I hate to jinx us, but knock on wood, we are very comfortable with the resources that we have, the infrastructure we have, the support that we have, not only within the city, but within the community, that, I said, we feel very much like we are at the front end, you know, and...
With plenty of personal protective equipment. We're not shy on supplies.
Correct. At this time, you know, we are well-equipped, and like I said, again, we have not had to, to implement that usage to a high degree yet. So, you know, we are not to that point.
Chief, as this virus moves, moves along, the talk is obviously that eventually it's going to get worse before it gets better. What are the city's contingency plans once, say, the hospital gets overwhelmed, and now they need to quarantine people? What is the city's plans as far as if we need to set up almost like a MASH situation? Are we looking at the rec gym? Are we looking at the high school gyms? Are we looking at the county expo center that has dividers that can put people in one area of the building, close it off, another area of the building, close it off? Do we have agreements with those jurisdictional authority people? And second, I guess, is, have we had that communication with them so that the hospitals, or is that up to the hospitals to do it, not the city?
That is, the city will be more of a resource in that regard, because ultimately, if we get to, to that point, you know, it becomes a public health emergency. You know, and either the federal public health system, the state public health system has those plans in place of, what do we do? You know, that how we support them as a city is that we have some relationships and we have some different resources. The other benefit that we have is many of those resources are vacant right now. Many of those buildings are not, like schools, you know, are not in session, et cetera. The other thing that we have the option of doing is, by this national or federal, state, and local declaration of emergency, we can take possession and take ownership of those facilities, you know, which we certainly don't want to do less than judiciously. That's, you know, as this disease, or this infection continues to, to evolve, you know, from what I'm reading, what our research people are telling me, you know, this is not akin to the early 1900s Spanish influenza, where we had to have these big sick wards of people. You know, that's, eighty, right now, what we are consistently seeing is 80% of people that are infected remain symptom-free. You know, they never even manifest with a symptom. You know, 16% or greater have some symptoms, but rapidly recover. You know, and about 3% of, just between 3 and 4 have a, is the mortality rate. You know, still a fairly significant number. You know, we value every person's life, and, you know, and still, when you do the math of that 3% to 4%, that's concerning. But you don't have the debilitating illness that you have, like with, had back then with the Spanish influenza. It's not what we're seeing at this time.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. I can only imagine the, the amount of stress and pressure that is going on within our, our department heads, as well as you, Chief Stanley. So the question I have, because with us being elected officials, and I don't know how many are having the same experiences that I'm having, but who do we direct citizen questions to? Because the questions are, because other communities, and I don't think other communities, as in, say specifically, but I should say maybe other counties, or other neighboring states are sharing information. To Mr. Miller's point, not necessarily name, address, social security number, but at least, you know, what was the circumstance that they became ill? So if, if the questions that have been coming my way is, do we have testing kits in our community? You know, are, are clinics, do they have them? What are the capacities of our Theta, Mercy, and Aurora? What, how are they going to communicate that? Is there going to be, what entities actually are responsible for some type of MASH unit, those types of things? So who should we be telling our citizens, then, to reach out to?
Yeah.
To answer those questions? Because that's, that's what the community wants to know right now, and I think is incredibly frustrating.
Absolutely. You know, let me, let me break that up into several pieces, and I think I can, can share some information with you, and also with the viewing community. There are people here that there's a shortage of tests, or that they're being denied tests. You know, and there is some truth to that. We are not electively testing. So you can't say, you know what, I visited grandma at the nursing home two months ago, I want to test. You know, I would like to have a test. You know, I, I came in this room with 10 people, I want to test. You cannot self-elect for testing. Testing has to be, it's very similar to a prescription. You have to be screened, and then based on either your symptoms, your history, or your, your history, physical history, or your travel history, they will make a determination of if you should be tested. And then, a medical order is put in place to have you have that test. So there's a lot of confusion and concern, you know, amongst not just our, our citizens, but, you know, citizens everywhere in this country about, well, is there enough tests, and can I just go get tested? You know, this, this isn't like other medical tests, you know, that you can just run out and say, I want to be, I want to have my cholesterol tested. You know, this has to be a prescribed test.
But to your, to your example, do they call Mercy? Do they call Aurora?
Yes. So call your primary care physician, or your medical provider. You know, that's, and that, so we don't inundate the healthcare system, please understand that if you have symptoms, if you have a fever, cough, and shortness of breath, or you're concerned that you have been exposed, call your healthcare provider. Don't call your healthcare provider and say, I've been thinking, I might want this test, because that just bogs down their system. So they call that the healthcare provider. For those that do not have that, that healthcare provider, there is a public health hotline that will help them navigate that. And I'm sorry, I don't have that with me right this second, but I will make sure the council gets that, that hotline number.
It's on the county health department update page on their current update.
Perfect. And I believe it's, I'm relatively certain it is on our page as well. That you call the health department, they can help you. Perfect, thank you. The Winnebago County Health Department COVID-19 hotline, 920-232-3026. I don't know if we can have Jake put that on the, the screen, too. Thank you.
One more quick point. I got, it's my understanding, if somebody's showing symptoms, they're not supposed to go to the hospital, they're supposed to call in first, right?
Correct. Correct.
Is, is it, is that related to the amount of time that it takes once someone who may have been exposed, for them to sanitize the room, something like two hours? Is that accurate?
Yeah, correct. Plus, like I said, a lot of that screening, you know, it's still cold and flu season. You know, people still have pneumonia. They start, so they want to talk about, what is that? And it's, oh, it sounds to me like you have a sinus infection. Here's your prescription for antibiotic, go get it. You know, rather than have them come to the office. You know, like I said, they're trying to do more telemedicine, you know, referral-type stuff. Then many, for, there is no antibiotic, there is no vaccine for the coronavirus, so I really don't necessarily need to see you in the hospital. I can probably administer, or in the, the doctor's office, I can tell you what you need to do from home, is my assumption of what they're telling you. So that's how to, to find out about testing and resources. There are starting to be alternative testing sites pop up around the Wisconsin area, you know, the state of Wisconsin. We are discussing, today, we discussed with the hospital what their plans are around that. They do not have their plans finalized, so it'd be premature for me to comment on that, but they are actively working towards that end. The other thing that is happening statewide, and probably nationwide as well, you know, right now, there has only been two laboratories, you know, state-sanctioned laboratories where that testing could be done. That's, they are starting to allow testing from secondary independent labs, like private business labs, you know, that, to prepare for the increasing demand. So shortage of tests, not a concern in our area yet, nor the ability to conduct the testing as well. As far as the contingency planning of, you know, what happens if we have to operate the MASH hospital, we are going to have a planning conference call with our area hospitals, with our healthcare providers, public health, emergency management, law enforcement, Friday, to review what everybody's got planning, making sure that we're all on the same page, and we're all, that nothing's fallen through the cracks. on the same page and we're all, that nothing's falling through the cracks. So, we are pursuing that actively as well.
And Chief, there was some reference on another program about physical distancing, but continuing to socially check in via phone and other means on friends, neighbors, family. Is that, I believe that that's what the county health department's also advocating.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, our, one of our most vulnerable populations are the elderly who many times already suffer from social isolation. Then, as all of us are becoming more socially isolated because of this event, you know, and I mentioned earlier, this is a stressful time for people. That, you know, we want to make sure that they know they're still cared about, that they're still loved by family and friends, that they're still communicating, that we don't want people to give up all hope. You know, the, it's, we're not that dire. But like I said, it's the, can be depressing for many to be isolated in the home and not have the normal contacts that maybe I would have in the workplace or socially. So, we do still need to to make sure that we're checking on people and encouraging them and finding things to be positive about. You know, again, thank you for for your support. Like I said, we feel very much like we enjoy that in times of non-crisis. But the supports and outreach that has come from council to make sure that we have what we need and to give us encouraging words is greatly appreciated. We'll keep communicating with you as as things develop and evolve. I just want to take the a moment too that, you know, council, member Allison Hasby talked about, you know, being worked and stressed and, you know, council member Miller, I'd like to apologize for my flip statement to you.
Sorry.
That was inappropriate and I apologize. But, I said, we're, we want you to know that we're working hard to to stay on top of this within what we know.
We're used to those kind of things from the kind of communications that we get. So, if we, we've got a little thick skin. We can handle it.
Very good. Thank you.
We thank you for everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just a couple other things. The, you know, the city's website has all the links to the county's website. The county's website does allow you to subscribe to updates from the county health department. So, we encourage the public to do that to get the most up-to-date information. There's a whole resource of different links and whatnot. And then internally, we are regularly keeping in touch with our employees because as you can understand, there's a lot of uncertainty, probably more than anything at this point, about what might happen. And we've been as responsive as we can. We've tried some things and some things have worked out very well. Got great feedback on those other things. We try and they haven't done well. Not that put anybody at risk, but just trying to accommodate people. What we want people to do is be able to show up to work. We've made some accommodations for people who can't because they're caring for their family members. So, we're doing those things as well. And I've done some video messaging to the employees. I've done it every few days just to kind of just keep things going. So, I think the employees appreciate that. And just trying to, just to keep things going and keep theirs, keep their, their enthusiasm and their momentum up. So, we're, we're pleased with that.
And just for the public's benefit, Mr. Raloff, if you, would you like to share that while Chief Stanley is director for the emergency operations, you've been designated as the informational liaison? So, that includes external and internal, correct?
Yes. So, I'm in regular contact with different agencies. You know, this has obviously hit a lot of different, you know, restaurants and the food establishments has hit them hard. So, I've been in regular contact with Amy Alpert, with the Convention Visitors Bureau, Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce. And we're going to be getting together to see if there are things we can do. I think there, I, there are some things that I might want to consider in terms of easing up on some zoning issues, just on a short-term basis, temporary signage, drop-offs, pickups for the restaurants and things like that. So, we're trying to be creative about those things. I'm scouring what's going on nationally because this is happening everywhere. And there's some interesting ideas popping up. And I want to take advantage of those to to assist our businesses during some difficult times.
You, you kind of mentioned that. I was going to kind of wait till the council discussion. I can bring it up now because I, I got a phone call from a gentleman. Where, where are we at as far as like our TIF districts? Are we going to be paying that money out to those districts if they meet all the requirements during these times? And then second, you know, what about property taxes and things where people are on different payment plans? There's been, you know, on the national level and some others, they've waived some timelines, like now they've waived for filing for income tax and things like that. So, just to kind of, are we waiving things? Are we postponing things? Are we doing things to make sure that there's a fluency in in our TIF districts and our, you know, because you mentioned businesses and things like that. If you could just, you or Russ or even Alan could maybe just kind of comment on that?
We haven't suspended any of those types of operations. In some cases, we don't have the authority, for example, taxes. Their taxes are due at the end of this month for the installment plan. But most of our, you know, residents, you know, do the one or two installments anyway. So, but a handful do the four installment. We don't have the ability to waive those things. As far as TIF payments go, normally our Pago payments don't happen until September anyway. And that requires them to be up to date with their taxes as of the last payment, which is in July. So, it's a little early for those types of things. But we're taking a look at all those. We're going to have a, you know, we'll be talking to you about the the agenda on Tuesday. It's going to be a big agenda because we want to keep some things going. We want the, it's about continuity of service. We have some deadlines coming up. So, we're getting those things taken care of now rather than later.
Councilmember Mugrahar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, first, City Manager Raloff, I just want to say thank you. Your willingness to declare that state of emergency early and get, try to get out ahead of things as early as possible. I like that, you know, you're willing to do that and, you know, opening the EOC and trying to get, you know, Chief, Chief Stanley, Chief Smith, you know, all of our, our public safety professionals just onboard, you know, in the room, making sure that we're, we're trying to take as little of the, as much of a lead as possible in these interesting times as Chief, Chief got to, go ahead and then I'll.
I think I want to give you the council a little credit. Our most recent strategic plan you adopted, you directed us to work on emergency preparedness. And we held a session in September that, to be honest with you, was a tad bit humbling for us. We learned a lot of lessons through that process. That helped us a ton. So, when that issue came up, that moment of truth, we were the first city in the state to our knowledge to declare the emergency. That's not a pat on the back type of thing, but it was a recognition that the training that you essentially directed us to do, we did it. And I think it, it paid off because we were so much more prepared. And Linda Coleman complimented us for, for being ahead of that. And that's what we're trying to do because this is, this is a wave. I keep using that. This is a wave that we're trying to manage. And by staying ahead of it as much as possible, we're going to be much better off. Mr. Davis, I'm not sure which of the, which of the items I didn't touch or you want to correct me on.
If I could just.
I'm correcting your, that's right on the TIF portion. The part that we talked about at the workshop last week with GOEDC, we were concerned about how the situation could affect the revolving loan fund and capital catalyst. We talked about delaying principal and interest payments for those small businesses, pushing them out to July. And that's something that we actually approved earlier this week. So, that's one instance where we've delayed things where GOEDC is not requiring those payments at this point in time, just based on the circumstances.
Councilmember Mugrahar wanted to finish his question. And then also, Councilmember Peschall and I believe Allison Hasby have to leave by six. So.
No problem. Second part was, you were right, both you, Chief Stanley and yourself, information is key for the public and for staff here at City, at City Hall and for us. And so, information is key, trying to get that out as, as accurately and as quickly as possible. I appreciate what you guys have done so far. Keep it up. There's not some, there's no such thing as too much information. So, just trying to make sure it's accurate. And you guys have been doing, doing a fantastic job. And then finally, you touched on it, flexibility and adaptability within City Hall for staff, trying to make sure that, you know, they've got the ability to, to do their work here for us and on behalf of the city, but also that they can take care of their business at home too. So, I appreciate your willingness to do that. But also, as you kind of mentioned, and I was going to touch on it, but I'm glad you already did. Seems like you're ahead of it, you know, with, with the business community a bit. If there are opportunities for us to be flexible and adaptable for them so that they have any chance of trying to weather this storm, I don't know that there's too many council members up here that would, would say no to just trying to help them out as much as possible within reason. So, keep doing what you can and, and whatever you need from us, I think you just, you just come back.
And and to Councilmember Allison Hasby's point, you know, to the degree we do something that is normally something reserved for council, we'll let you know that we've done something in your stead. Because I think it's just, that's just, that's what you would want us to do anyway. That's really all staff has.
I just want a quick follow-up because I also had a question from someone about water bills and utility service. There was some discussion, I think, at the community level about, you know, private utilities may grant some extensions and that. But the question is whether we're going to do the same with water, water bills.
We continue, we're regulated by the Public Service Commission. So, we're, you know, awaiting some relaxation that they may do. There's a lot of things that might happen. I just heard a little something about some delays in the census, US census. I think different agencies. So, to answer your question specifically, PSC would have to relax those rules for us. And I'm anticipating that something will come down. But right now, we're still, we're still collecting utilities, no change at this point. And I don't want to mislead people because if the Public Service Commission doesn't give us that authority, I don't want to send a, a bad signal that it's coming and then we pull it out and then it would look like we pulled the rug out from under folks. I encourage people to, you know, continue paying the bills and everything. We don't shut off. That's one thing that's different than some of the other private utilities. We don't shut off. So, if people end up having it on their tax bill at the end of the year, that's something we could address down the road. And we give them an opportunity to pay before we put it on the tax bill. So, those are the different things that we're going to just keep our eye on.
Okay. So, can we move on to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Raloff.
That's okay. I've got a, I've got a couple of questions. Are, are we talking about, are we looking at suspending CapEx? Are we, are we looking at some of our financial resources, furloughing, you know, hopefully it doesn't happen. But, I mean, this, this thing is going to get a lot worse before it gets better. And then, and I'm throwing a lot at you at one time here, but also I'm getting a lot of calls from our restaurant bar owners asking if, if they can get a 90-day extension on their, on their license fees and, and things like that. And are these things that we have the power to do?
I'll make note of some of those things that are within our jurisdiction. I know because of Bill's business experience, he understands the PSC part. If we're regulated, we can't do it, we, we can't do it. But to the degree we can do those things, I'm going to check on the, the liquor license one. I'm not totally familiar. If we've got flexibility, I think we ought to look at it. We ought to be looking at any type of flexibility during this time. The licensing, the revenue we get from licensing is not a make or break money. Property taxes make or break. State aid is make or break. Our, you know, little bit of revenue that we get off of these things is not, but it could be, you know, it could be something. I know the chamber, I just talked to them, they're going to be looking at some micro loans for some of their businesses, particularly those restaurants and everything. I think everybody recognizes we got to do something to help bridge because these are small businesses that are, they're pretty much living by.
Week to week.
Week to week.
Yeah.
You know, whatever. So, I, I will take those, I think Angela is writing them down because it's, she's our liquor license guru here.
All right.
Just as far as direction goes, we, we got a big agenda. The, you know, CapEx, we do have some capital expenditures. Some of our capital improvements are on next week's budget. I'm going to give those to you. It's a word bid. They're budgeted. The funds are there. The strategic plan, would you like to hold off on that or do you want me to bring it forward? I just, that was something that you directed me to do by the end of the month. By golly, we got it done. But given everything we got going on, would you rather have it or would you rather wait? Is there any consensus on that?
Does that seem like essential at this?
Well, I guess, if it's ready and done, give it out and may.
We, we already received it.
Because it is a template of how we move forward. So.
I'll put it on the agenda and I'll just leave it for council to decide at that point. Thank you.
As far as voting on it and make the changes.
Right. That's all.
So, since we have a couple council members that have got to leave shortly, they may want to have their say in the public participation, the council discussion and direction, the city manager on public participation and accommodation of city council board and commission members' attendance at meetings. We were given some potential, I don't know, Mr. Raloff, do you want to let City Attorney Lawrenceon, all right?
She's prepared a, a great deal and she's been going to some webinars to listen in on things.
So, with the pandemic, although government facilities are currently exempt from the 10-person rule, we're still looking to generally follow the health recommendations and restrict the number of people that get together in any place and the amount of time that we all spend together in that place. To that end, I gave you by email last night, and I hope everybody received it and had a chance to review it, some information that was gathered from the Department of Justice and the League of Municipalities regarding public meetings and participation. And we're looking for some direction from council to facilitate the most effective use of meeting time and limit the time that we do spend in meetings with, with the council and boards and commissions. The city manager already directed staff to cancel meetings and delay action on matters that are not time-sensitive and focus on business that's necessary either in response to the emergency or necessary for continuity of service, continuity of service. So, in addition to that, we're following all recommended practices and orders, providing social distance at meetings. In addition to all those things, staff is recommending council consider some temporary rules, modifications for meetings necessary to limit that interaction and time spent. One of those is eliminating the general public comment period, not pertaining to any agenda items. So, just the, the general citizen statement period. People will still have the option to contact you. They can write you a letter. They can call you. They can email you. But again, just to keep the meetings short and business focused, we're recommending that we eliminate that citizen comment period for council meetings and for those boards and commissions that have that. As to agenda items, we can continue to allow public comment on individual agenda items or the council could choose to limit comment with the exception of public hearings, which we actually do have, I think, four on Tuesday's council meeting. I believe they're the same items that were on the RDA meeting today. There was no one there. I don't think we're expecting a lot of people, but public hearings are, are kind of an exception to this. The rest of the agenda items, there is no statutory requirement to allow the public to be there and comment on those. Again, they can comment. They can contact you by phone. They can contact you by email.
Excuse me just a minute. So, like if a council member receives a text during a public meeting, is that what you're referring to?
I am not referring to that. That I would still not recommend you doing ever.
Thank you. Okay.
What I'm talking about though would be just limiting public, telling, encouraging the public, similar to what we had on the bottom of the agenda tonight, you know, with a notice saying, you may email the city manager general email number. You can send, send a letter by mail. You can do those things to comment on them. But discourage the public from showing up at meetings, having to sit near each other in meetings, having to sit near the rest of us at meetings. I guess I'll maybe stop for direction on those two items and then go on to the next bit, which is regarding accommodation of board and councils, you know, participation by maybe telephone or other means is, is the other issue that we talked about. But.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. I'm going to get to the recommendation at hand. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm in support of, of eliminating extracurricular speaking and attendance at the meetings for a period of time.
It would be, my intention is just for the period of the emergency.
Okay.
If I wasn't clear on that, I'm sorry. But yeah.
And I, I think that if we wanted that to be further or if that state of emergency gets extended, we want to come back to that and bring that up for a topic of, of then, you know, having some type of consensus of still moving forward within that timeframe.
Right. With the ordinance you did pass, you guys have the control over how long the emerg- With the ordinance you did pass, you guys have the control over how long the emergency lasts, so.
Councilmember Mugrahar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I never speak for the entire council, but I know that none of us would take that lightly in terms of removing public comment from any meeting, whether it's a council meeting, whether it's a board and commission meeting, but it's prudent. And I would be fully supportive of removing the public comments at the beginning and the end, as well as limiting or eliminating public comment in general at any meetings, myself. They do, you know, there is still the option of communicating with us through many means. It is an interesting time that we're in.
Prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
Yes.
Good clarification, but I think it's prudent. But we don't take that lightly. For those that are listening at home, it's nothing that we would ever take lightly, that we'd ever want to stifle anyone's comment on anything, so. But for our safety and theirs, it's prudent.
So then, if I understand this, then staff recommendation about public participation with regard to phoning in or other items during the meeting, it's the most disruptive, as I understand that?
Yeah. We are not recommending that. We've actually had some conference calls between staff and we've had challenges, just getting staff all together and having clear communication on the phone. So I'm not really recommending that at this point because I think it would be very disruptive. And again, we're trying to keep business at the meeting to just those essential things that are very routine things to keep operations moving forward. So I think it's, we're not gonna be bringing items that hopefully would generate a lot of public, you know, comment or controversy, so.
Did you want to talk a lot?
If you don't mind. In regards to that part...
And then Steve, Deputy Mayor.
Continuity of government is important, and us being here is important. If, even if it's just us being here and the public seeing that, that is an important visualization. So I think as long as possible, us seven and important staff need to meet in this chamber as long as possible. And if the situation arises that that becomes no longer feasible due to circumstances, then we address it at that time. That would be my personal opinion.
And I would agree with you, Councilmember Mugrahar, with some exception, obviously, if one of us became...
Quarantined.
Quarantined or, then perhaps we could, forward-thinking, allow for a phone-in on a limited scope? Is that, I mean, just for that individual, if they are able? Is that doable, technology or legal?
I can write, and the, if, whatever you recommend tonight, I would, my proposal would be, I will write an ordinance, bring it to you, basically saying, notwithstanding any of our other rules in the municipal code or in our council rules that we adopt, for this period of the emergency, you know, we're going to suspend these things and do whatever. I would, I could include that in there. I'm not the technological person, but, so I'm gonna punt on that maybe.
I'm not.
Maybe for Jake.
Maybe a smidgen more than, but not much more. If you, if you feel, especially with the, you know, if any of you were, you know, at risk or just wanted to be careful, we'll make the technology work if that's what you want to do. We know that Green Bay did it last night. Whether we've got a daisy chain, a bunch of iPhones around the microphones, or we have more of the WebEx, and Lynn was concerned because, you know, our first foray into it, it didn't work well. And there are some issues. Everybody's trying to do the same thing we're doing. Hopefully, at six in the evening, maybe it's a little less because the business, a lot of businesses are closed. But during the day, it's been a challenge, to be honest with you, so.
Councilmember Miller, if I may just ask you, have you experienced or do you anticipate some broadband and other communications challenges?
It's, it's gonna be challenging unless, unless we've got some type of VPN setup. I'm assuming, I don't know, I'm, Tony's not here.
We do have VPN set up.
Do we have a VPN set up? So we do have some private data available to us, but if it's, if it's just general bandwidth, everybody's using it. So it's, you're exactly right, Mayor, so.
As I'm understanding, this would be limited to board members, council members, not, okay.
Well, I think we were talking about council, but we didn't really get to the boards and commissions.
There may be some boards or commissions that do have things that are gonna have to come forward. I'm thinking plan commission, a little, a little farther down the road here, we're gonna have the board of review for tax assessment reviews, those may have to go ahead and meet.
But the statutorily required boards, not necessarily the local option boards, correct? Councilmember Peschall, sorry.
If we're gonna have a, if we're gonna have a board or commission meeting, everything Lynn just said is going to apply. It's gonna be because we really need them to move something along. The RDA is another good example. We had an RDA meeting this afternoon. If we have deadlines and things like that, we're gonna need to move those things. So they would be very important because sometimes, as you all well know, you know, some of our boards and commissions getting a quorum is difficult. So having that flexibility with them would probably make sense. If you're gonna do it for yourselves, I would extend that courtesy to our boards.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. I keep on hitting the button thinking it's working.
Is that my problem?
We're low-tech tonight, low-tech.
So I, I think that in the, in the state of emergency that we're in, we should do what we can to involve as many forms of technology that we can do to keep business rolling. I think that's important. My concern is that, is that we, is that this is only relates to the time within the state of emergency. I have a real concern of authoring ordinance or amending an ordinance that makes it so that this can be the everyday way of showing up. So just, and I put that out there because I have those concerns and those concerns have been expressed.
I will make it very clear.
Okay.
But I think you can make it clear, but give yourself as much flexibility to jive with this thing. Again, echoing Bob's sentiments at its temporary.
Because I'm hearing flexibility with regard to the technology.
Yes, yep.
But no flexibility with, this is for the emergency situation.
It's only for the emergency.
You can always revisit.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I agree.
Is there a way in the ordinance to put a date on it that we will revisit it at the, a week?
Before that expiration.
Again, by the ordinance you passed a little earlier in this meeting, you guys are controlling the emergency. So the emergency has been extended until it is terminated by council. So you guys are already controlling that.
Okay. And we'll bring that, once the emergency's over, we will bring that back to you. Then that, that rule will then be over and will no longer apply.
So does it just expire?
It expires when you say the emergency's over.
So we, it has to, it has to come back to us for a decision.
We always have to bring the emergency back to you to end. That's one of the weird things is I can start it, but only you can end it.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Since I have no more board and commission meetings to go to, I think we should really look at the ordinance as allowing it up to city staff, what boards and commissions need to meet that flows the government. You know, we know the RDA, the plan commission, but does the beautification committee need to meet? Does the bike and pet committee need to meet? Does the sustainability committee need to meet? Those are boards and commissions that obviously are very important to the overall, but during emergency, I think only boards and commissions that have things to move forward, that has to have council action, should be the ones that are meeting at any given time during emergency situations. You know, those are our comments, you know, I'm, I think we've done a great, great job of taking the lead. Unfortunately, Windvale County has fallen down on the ball. I mean, their offices are open as if nothing's happening. If you saw the article or yesterday on TV, I mean, you can walk in, get your marriage license, you can walk in and get a death certificate, you can walk in and get anything you need. They're not closing down for anything. And that showed because they didn't have anything when we asked for emergency help on the coronavirus. So it's very disappointing. So I think we've taken the lead. I think we understand what needs to be done at this point. And I commend my council members and, and our city staff for taking a leadership role in this situation. Because I think a lot of people aren't taking it as serious as they should at this point yet. Just because we don't have, we have an active one in the city of Oshkosh, it will happen. It will happen, so, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And also just to point out too, for folks who are watching, I had, I've had a couple of calls, well, you know, what can the city do, what is the county doing and so on? And just, you know, to be clear that, that at one time there was a health department under the city. That is all at the county level, the county health department, for those who were not aware of that. And they are our lead agency on this, is that accurate?
They, with respect to public health, yes.
Public health matters, so just reiterating that.
If you have any, just as before we exit that other topic, to the degree you think you're going to have a need for, for calling in or whatever, please let Diane know or email me and we'll make sure that we get that taken care of for you and we'll work out whatever arrangements we need to get worked out for you.
So if they need to put a, well, there's a phone right here, right? But if they need to put a conference bridge or something?
We'll figure out the technology, even if we got a couple tin cans and string, we'll get it done.
Which shouldn't be that bad because, is it the same technology here that's at the convention center?
Yeah, there's a lot of...
Because John...
It has to be technology, then I'm, I'm gonna expose myself for, as a phony.
The CVB had a board meeting, well, a couple years ago already, and several board members were in Florida. One was in Arizona, and they were able to call in and no problem and listen to the whole meeting and have input.
It's really more about making sure that we can also, the public who's watching on city cable can hear it. Because I think you'd be able to hear it pretty easily. We just gotta make sure that our viewing audience is extended to the same courtesy because really, that's what we're saying, that public attendance is gonna be, is gonna be that. So we're gonna make sure that you can hear as well as the general public out in the, out in the listening world.
And I guess my only other question would be, does any, do you or one of the other staff members want to either address, you know, enforcement end of things or also the elections in terms of timing and that?
Elections, we are moving, proceeding for the April 7th. We haven't heard anything. There was a state elections board meeting today, we'll get a little briefing on that. We're not aware anything's changing. We are planning to make, well, first of all, we are absolutely doing what, Mayor, you suggested earlier, encouraging people to do early voting, preferably through mail-in. We are accommodating people here at City Hall because we, we're required by law to do so. But it's not, it's not the best setup of...
Today was the last day for requesting the absentee ballot for myvote.wi.gov?
Yes, and we don't know if that's gonna be extended, so thank you for...
No, no.
Nope.
It was the last day for registration.
Registration.
Yeah.
Excuse me. You can still request the absentee ballot on myvote.
Online registration, correct?
Correct. Online registration ends at midnight tonight.
Okay.
But you can still register to vote, you know, in person, you can still register to vote on the day of the election.
I voted today and I thought it was really nice because people opened doors for me and handed things very well. I thought it was very well organized.
Mr. Herman, I had the same experience today.
Please be aware that there are those limitations as to the number of people that are allowed in the building at the same time, though?
And if we have a rainy day, it's not gonna be a pleasant experience because there are gonna be a lot of people waiting outside. So we were able to accommodate that.
On election day at the polling stations, are we gonna have security in place at every station? Because obviously, everybody wants to vote. And if we see somebody that might have symptoms, can we turn them away? We don't want them around everybody else.
I don't think we have the right to turn people away from voting, but we will encourage people to, to do the right thing. We're more worried about our election workers because the vast majority of our election workers are elderly. And we are planning that all of them call in sick or at the last minute. They're troopers. They're not telling us today, but election's two weeks away. So we are gonna plan to have things to take care of. Why don't you grab the other microphone, Dean? I'm having fun over here. I think we have an obligation to our longstanding election workers that if they can't do it this time, it's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna find it. I've, the employees, our full-time employees are aware that we're gonna be a very flexible team. And if Angela needs 200 people on election day, you're gonna have them there. We're gonna make sure all hands are on deck so that there is a valid election here. Chief Smith, if you want to address the other issue?
Regarding security, it's, we are in difficult times, but having folks dressed like me at a polling place tends to not work well. It tends to stifle the freedom of elections. We'll certainly monitor what's going on and anytime we have an issue at a polling place, we always have supervisors respond to try to diffuse whatever's going on at the, at the polling place itself to ensure that we foster a good, open and positive election environment.
Angela, do you have anything to add or?
I don't, I, we, the absentees, we had over 500 today requests, so I think that the majority are doing it by mail, which is great.
Okay, so do you, do you think you have enough detail?
I've got what I need, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.